SB 1, and I'm going to do my best to channel my inner Rubik Golanyan, who could not be with us. He is, alas, in the fine area of Yosemite. But we will talk just briefly by way of council your interest in SB 1, because this has the potential to advance where we are, what we are doing with our street resurfacing and rehabilitation program. As you know, our pavement management index today is in excess of what our neighbors are. We do a good job of maintaining those streets such that you know you are in the fine city of Glendale when you enter. However, we know that we still have work to do, and that will be aided significantly by way of the funding that we get from SB 1. SB 1, of course, is...
Mr. Mayor, should we put all those into the agenda? Because he only read the first item.
Right. I'm sorry, sir. Yes, a good point.
And all, yes, go ahead, Mr. President.
Two would be Director of Community Development Regarding Transportation Services in Downtown Glendale. A motion direct, motion to direct staff. Three would be Director of Public Works Regarding Sent Bill 1, the Road Repair of Accountability Act of 2017. Three A, motion to note and file. Five would be Directors of Community Development and Public Works Regarding Glendale-Burbank Regional Streetcar Feasibility Study. A motion to direct staff to issue a report for proposal. Six would be Directors of Community Development and Public Works Regarding Regional Transit Project and Studies. Six A, motion, note and file. That would be all.
So we're doing the items one, two, and three in combination, basically? Is that what we're doing?
We're looking to do one through, one, two, three, five, and six in one kind of stitched-together presentation.
Right. So it's not in a special order or anything? It's just...
No, sir.
Okay.
So as I say, the prop, I'm sorry, SB 1 is a reflection of the need of the infrastructure projects relating to roadways, transportation, to the tune of $130 billion backlog here in the state of California. This landmark bill was signed into law by Governor Brown earlier this year. However, I have to note that there is a challenge to the, to the law, and it may be ultimately put in front of the voters. In the interim, however, we will continue this fall, we'll start to receive funding and continue on until such time as the fate of SB 1 is ultimately determined by the voters. This comes from the good folks from CTC that talk about how the money flows from the pump and from vehicle registrations to cities. You can see the largest two chunks, there's the 12 cents excise tax and the, the transportation improvement fee, kind of what goes around, comes around, we're talking about VLF once again, as well as some increases on diesel sales taxes and excise taxes. Those will ultimately throw, flow through this kind of matrix into various funding categories. And so at this point, what we are looking at, we are expecting is about $3 billion annually, half of which, 1.5, would be set aside in this road maintenance and rehabilitation account. That would be flowing to the cities, the other part going to the folks at Caltrans. There will be a significant degree of oversight from CTC in terms of audit functions and ensuring that the money is making its way into infrastructure projects, such that the cities are going to be required to provide multi-year project descriptions for approval and ultimately audit by CTC. That's not a problem for Glendale. As you know, as I say, we have a rather robust street resurfacing project in place in any given year, and so we do have a number of projects that we will be presenting to you as time moves forward. The smaller pots of money, the ones that will be targeted, some of which will apply or that will be appealing to Glendale specifically, others would be more regional in scope, are listed here, the congested corridors, $250 million annually for large thoroughfares that have regional or countywide significance. So you, as you think of a map of Glendale, those city, those streets that intersect different cities and serve the county would be the corridors that would be most focused on through this $250 million pot. Then you have the trade corridors, $300 million. The, the trade corridors may be a little less for us by way of where that money would flow, probably more likely it'd be somewhere in the downtown area, downtown LA, and going down to the harbors. But of interest is $750 million annually for transit and rail through the straight, the state transit assistance program. While we would not be directly applying for these funds, by the nature of the type of transit operator that Glendale is, our partners by way of Metro and MetroLink would have access and would be very competitive to these funds, and we would hope to partner and collaborate with them to secure funding for Glendale, such that we will be talking about later today in this presentation. Some of the other programs, active transportation is again something that's very important and is on many different planes. So we would be looking to apply pursuant to council's direction as to which types of projects, most notably the Riverwalk program that we have along, in collaboration with LA City, along the LA River, could be something that we would apply for, as well as maybe perhaps some of the wave-finding programs that we have focused on. There are a smattering of other projects and funding sources, different buckets of money that are going to be made available. Glendale, as I say, will be competitive, more competitive than some than others, but at the end of the day, what we're looking at is new money for the street resurfacing program that we have in Glendale. Ultimately, upon the maturation of the funding stream, we're hoping that you'll see a, effectively a doubling of the amount of money that would be going to street infrastructure projects. So as you see here, the, the city could be eligible for any wide range of transit-related and transportation-related programs, everything from workforce training, meaning folks that are working on the, the rolling stock, as well as the infrastructure, as, all the way through to capital and physical improvements and infrastructure. When you think about the amount of money that the city of Glendale gets, when we look at the 1718 funds for that matter, our budget that was recently adopted, you see that we do get about $4.1 million in state gas tax funds today. SB 1, the second from the bottom, we're showing 1.1 million, really reflecting a limited amount for the current calendar year, when those funds, those funds begin to flow later on this fall. But I will tell you that when you look at our Prop A, our Prop C, a chunk of the Prop R monies, we're making good use of those dollars, not just on our street resurfacing programs, but also by our B-line operations, as well as bus stop maintenance, and a whole host of other priorities that the city council has focused on through the course of your budget. When we look at the Measure M dollars, those are the, the newer dollars that were part of that last countywide initiative. We see that there will be a big focus by way of subregional on street and highway projects, transit service improvements, the transit center operations and what have you. But there is a robust program for us by way of M and O, and what we'll be looking to do is augment that with capital investments in the city overall. This is just a depiction of what we see by way of gas tax. You see in 1617 that four, a little over $4 million. We see a partial payment there in 1718, and as I say, by way of the maturation, presuming SB 1 sticks, the maturation of that funding stream, we would hope and expect to see about $8.12 million per year coming into Glendale for these important street projects. As I mentioned at the beginning, some of the projects, the SB 1 funds are going to be requiring that we give a multi-year assessment of what projects we will be spending the money on for the folks at CTC to vet, and it will be some of the more substantial projects that you see, larger thoroughfares and street rehabilitation, street reconstructions, as well as a number of the typical resealing and re-slurring of streets. And as I say, we have a multi-year program as part of our pavement management program that will, will soak up a big chunk of the dollars that will be flowing to Glendale, hoping, expecting they continue to move forward. With that, we'll transition over into the Be Smart Glendale, or Be Street Smart Glendale program, and Phil can take you through that and then move on through the other agenda items, unless council wants to ask questions as we go, or you want to make your way through the presentations first.
I think we need to stop here and ask questions before we move forward. Any questions so far? I have, I have a couple, you have questions, Mr. Speaker?
I have questions.
Okay.
So, looking at... Looking at the type of funding that SB 1 may potentially provide to Glendale, one of the categories listed in this handout is the awards grants for projects that encourage walking, biking, including planning, education enforcement. So something like the Maryland Paseo, a project that can benefit from SB 1? Could just promote walking, I don't know about biking, but walking for sure.
In the broader context of downtown, we think it could have some application. However, if Glendale were to move forward, you recall in the wake of the very successful Siclovia event recently, that if we were to do a series of improvements that would allow Glendale to have its own quarterly version of Siclovia, I think that would make for a more compelling application for those funds that would incorporate Maryland. But the two-block stretch that is Maryland by itself might not be as competitive as something that is a bit more ambitious.
So you're saying if we were to submit a project for approval that promotes walking, a quarterly Siclovia would be a better candidate than a permanent project like the Paseo?
I would say that we are, our opportunity for a, a series of public improvements that would facilitate a quarterly Siclovia would be more competitive. And to the extent that there are programming dollars, I don't know that we want to attach ongoing operations to grant funds, because those grant funds ultimately can run out. I think we'd be better served perhaps by investing in physical improvements that facilitate, that set the stage for that kind of programming that the city council would budget on its own each year.
What are you talking about, right? Physical improvements?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the implementation of vision.
I'd say with every shot, you know, I'd say with every shot, I've seen some of the other things they call active transportation, essentially, you know, blocking vehicular traffic and encouraging pedestrian. Not a slam dunk.
No, I would, I would think you maximize your opportunity by making something a bit larger that does have a larger regional feel. And you saw Siclovia, people were coming from all over. So as opposed to what we see right now, what we will be presenting to the council is something that, that focuses really on, on that, that portion of the arts and entertainment district in downtown Glendale.
Well, I know, but those are two different things. Siclovia is, even, even if held quarterly, it's one event per, you know, four months, whereas you, if, once you implement the Paseo project, it's there permanently, it's there to be used all the time, 24/7. So the return from that, I believe, is far greater than a quarterly Siclovia, even assuming that we could do that, could ever provide to our residents and anyone visiting Glendale. So we should be more aggressive in trying to use such funds or get such funds for the implementation of that project. Moving on to the trade corridor enhancement, it says that this is something that can implication city of Glendale and, and trade, as a trade corridor enhancement, we can get some money from the gas tax. How, how does the trade corridor enhancement apply to Glendale?
I would submit to you that probably doesn't apply as well to Glendale, considering just the freeway structure as it exists and the goods movement that we have today. I think that we'd probably be more competitive on congested corridors and through our partners on the rail program.
Okay, so no, it was just listed, a city could be eligible for funding through, and the first category was trade corridor enhancement, looked a little strange, so I'm going to cross that out. Next category, public transit intercity rail. So yes, that will, that is definitely something that we can...
Through our partners, yes.
Through our partners, and our partners being...
Metro, MetroLink, any other...
How about equal rapid transit?
Could very well be, if that's the case, sir.
And next category, active transportation. So active transportation includes, like, road maintenance, as well as transportation in the broader sense of the word?
The active transportation is more along the lines of the pedestrian and biking that we were discussing.
Okay, so again, this, this could apply to internal city projects that aren't necessarily regional, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. My, the, the last, the last two frames listed potential SB 1 projects, and every one of the projects listed are basically road maintenance projects.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we do this anyway, right? I mean, we, we do this, or we plan doing them, we do them slower, slower, we do them probably, you know, less frequently than we otherwise will be able to under SB 1, but I'm kind of disheartened by, by the fact that the potential SB 1 project doesn't list any other, other projects that are not necessarily road maintenance that I think this council wants to be implemented or is excited about. So is this an exhaustive list, or did, was this intentional, did this intentionally leave out those other projects?
The intention for the gas tax dollars is the street maintenance program. So if we have today about $4 million and we cover several street sections a year, and with the council this year has begun putting general fund money into street maintenance, when we, if presuming we're able to double the amount of dollars for street maintenance, there is an ample amount of street maintenance work to be done, and the intention for municipalities is that we would use those gas tax dollars for the, the bread and butter, meat and potatoes street maintenance programming.
Okay. So we're going back to the concept of, no, all this money is going to be used only for street maintenance?
Our streets, yes.
The, I just want to, want some clarification on the Glendale fiscal year 1718 funds and lists Measure M subregional, $15 million, and there's an asterisk saying estimating pending Arroyo Verdugo JPA project selection. Now, is, can we get some clarification on that? I know our...
Surely.
JPA representative is sitting here on the dais.
The projects here, the $15 million that we're looking at, here you go. Trying to find my slide here.
So that's a regional fund that's given to different subregions throughout.
Right.
Essentially, it's up to the members of each subregion to decide how they want to divide that up between themselves within certain parameters.
So the draft guidelines could fund projects, for example, of streets and roads projects, traffic control measures, active transportation projects, project, public transit services, green streets projects, public transit capital, transit-oriented community investments, a little bit of a broad topic there, transportation marketing, planning, engineering, and/or study for congestion management program. So there is a, a significant degree of latitude through the money set aside for those subregional projects going through the COGS.
And the $15 million under that JPA is exclusively Glendale's money? Is that the Glendale portion of the money, or is that...
No, that's what the COG has available for these projects.
Okay, so we don't know how much of that is going to actually end up in Glendale?
No, that's, yeah, so it's all pending the actual project selection.
Okay.
And let me ask a question about that, since it's about the regional. Do we already have a list of projects that have been submitted to the Arroyo Verdugo Committee that will be a JPA soon, or...
Soon. We have a list. I will, I cannot tell you how, when was the last time it was updated, however? I don't know that, as I sit here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the TDA Article 3, can you elucidate us on that a little bit?
The Transportation Demand, I think, Authority or Transportation Demand Act, I can't recall the actual acronym. Those are dollars that get set aside for things like ride-sharing, for carpooling, other types of investments to alleviate congestion by way of large employers in the region. And so those funds can flow, a lot of times you see that being done in collaboration with the folks at Disney and, you know, some of the larger employers in town.
And that money comes from where?
That money comes, I believe, through one of the subventions. I couldn't tell you as I sit here which one.
Okay, so on to Mr. Mayor.
Any more questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Could some of this money be used for a shuttle, let's say?
Yes, ma'am.
Around, if we had a project that was like that?
You could apply for those dollars and try to use them, sure.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The projects that we submit, doesn't matter what it is for, there's a competition from different cities. How many, how many cities are a member of this regional, subregional area, the one that Measure M subregional area that has $15 million? How many cities are...
Between Glendale, Burbank, La Cañada, I believe Pasadena, San Fernando, LA City, and I don't recall, ma'am, or the county...
Is, La, La Cusanda is coming in on the JPA, so...
So that would be the county, sure. So six?
This is not a COG? This is just a...
Not, it's, it's, they are moving towards getting their JPA, so that will occur.
And can you elaborate just a little bit on Measure R funding, the local return versus subregional return? For Measure R, we got, between the two, we have about $4 million. And when you look at the Measure M, you have about 18, 17 and a half million dollars between the two.
Sure. That local return is money that you get pursuant to the formula. We effectively use it for bus replacement, for the dial-arrived vehicles that we get. So, I mean, we are heavily invested in the B-line program, and a big chunk of our dollars do go there. They'll also fund, I believe, a portion of, of the maintenance facility, as well as the transportation center operations, the, at the south end of town. But, I mean, at the end of the day, we, we do a great deal of work in terms of fielding a, a good fleet of buses.
So our local return between Measure M and Measure R is pretty much the same, the funding that we get? It's about maybe $150,000 difference?
Effectively, it's based on, I believe, on a per capita, if I remember correctly.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Phil will take you through the update on Be Street Smart Glendale.
Be Street Smart Glendale is a branding for three projects that we got grants from Caltrans from back in 2014. Citywide pedestrian plan, which we are wrapping up now with, with our, our committee, and will be coming back to you as part of, in conjunction with the South Glendale Community Plan. This is more about projects and policy. Citywide Safety Education Initiative is just that, it's more about education citywide. And then the Safe Routes to School, little bit of projects, little bit of education, but specifically for schools. In 2015, the council hired a team headed by Nelson Nygaard. We last updated you in September of last year. Since that time, we have produced the Innovations Memo, and that is, is an attachment to your staff report. This was called for during budget when said, "Give us six innovative ideas." So that, that report captures those. They're not necessarily innovative everywhere, but they are to Glendale. They include a zero, a Vision Zero, that is, we don't want to see any fatalities, and we're going to work towards that goal. It's really establishing a goal. Twenty is plenty. Those are speed limit reductions down to lower speeds. Safe streets for seniors, this is where we focus on the data surrounding incidents with seniors, and then work on programs specifically aimed at their safety. No right on red in the downtown area. This is, can't turn right, and, and will help with some of the problem we're experiencing here. The flip side of that is, it may have an effect on traffic, but with our traffic model, we would be able to model that and bring you some ideas on, on what the impact would be. Leading pedestrian intervals, that is where we would give pedestrians a certain amount of time ahead of the change of traffic signals to start through the crosswalk, and then data-driven approach to allocate funding. Many times, policy will be, let's spread the funding over the whole city, whereas with data, we can start to pinpoint where exactly we need that. We've done some others, public, public outreach, we've talked about Siclovia, a safety, pedestrian safety advisory committee was formed. As I say, they have just completed their work on the citywide pedestrian plan, which is in draft. Our next steps on that will be to bring that and introduce that to the public and the commissions. As I say, that will come out, roll out with our South Glendale Plan. We will continue our outreach and engagement in different events, city events, and then the final plan will come following the South Glendale Plan. We have incorporated at least the southern part of the city into the environmental impact report, so we'll have that environmentally cleared. These are the potential projects that typically come with active transportation, curb extensions, get narrows road, improve mid-block crossings, first mile, last mile improvements around transit stops. In the Safety Education Initiative, these are the things that we have done. I hope you've seen our banners. We have billboards in high collision areas. We have reached out into different newspapers, and we've tried to use the bridge, the Verdugo Boulevard Bridge, to get the message across. Again, a lot of public events, promotional giveaways, swag, if you will. We've really jumped up our social media, online presence. The Billion Step Challenge is something that we continue, we're at 52 million steps, and so we will continue throughout to try and achieve that billion steps. These are some of our next steps in education. Put together posters, and one will have trilingual warning cards that PD will be able to use to, to remind people of the proper way to, to cross, ride their bike, or what have you. And then we'll continue the other things that we have been talking about. Safe routes to school, Mr. Mayor, I think you participated in our last one. We have been at eight public outreach events, talking about safe routes to school. We've held 65 events. Again, this is from September. In these different categories, we will start to plan, October 4th is our next Walk to School Day, and we will be working then for 1718 school year, plan of different events for that. Options for transportation services in downtown. This really started with the, well, a couple of things. I know Councilwoman Devine has been talking about it. Our tech study actually identified that gap between amenities in the southern part of the city and a lot of office in the northern part. I will say that there are some amenities that are starting to come up to the north, the most, most recently Central Grill, but still the majority of those amenities, lunchtime, after work, take place in the southern part. The, well, we have access through buses, they did note some difficulty. This is through our trend, our, our tech study. So we've looked at different ways, different programs that we could approach this, and we've got four different ideas that, some of them have different subsets. So a downtown shuttle, and this would mostly be, the idea here is mostly to enhance our current B-line service. We have 12 buses per hour, they're 15 to 20-minute headways. That's probably too long for somebody to say, "I'll take the bus and, and go down to the Americana and have lunch." If you missed that bus, you're waiting, if you just missed it, you're waiting 20 minutes. 20 minutes for it, your time there and back, you will eat up your hour. If we were to run, and again, this is, this is to, to make a unique bus service. If we were to do that through our transit operation, we would need to do a federal equity analysis, and that is, it's a requirement that we have, that when we start putting transit dollars into place, we need to do an analysis to make sure that those dollars are being properly located, if you will. Again, that's if we do that through our transit operation. Probably two years to do that analysis, order buses, have them delivered, get them ready for service, and then implement. This is a pretty big price tag. I think we looked at three additional buses in that first year, it's about $2.7 million, mostly to buy the buses, but then ongoing adds about $1 million to our B-line operation. These are some of the advantages and disadvantages. We've got that iconic vehicle, we can brand our 18-hour city, we can, with these, get more frequency, so reduce that 15 to 20-minute headway down to 20. to 12. The disadvantage is, it's a traditional bus. Do people really want to get on it? It's running now, are they using it? The 12-minute headways may still be too long for lunch. Shuttle services, and we'll talk more about this in relation to a trolley, had low ridership in the past. This, what we're calling Concept 1B, this is more an open-air trolley or a specialized vehicle. We call it temporary because in our research, we found that other cities have leased these vehicles. And so we put some, some numbers to that. But they are services where we've seen, it's been an influx of tourists during their peak times, mostly beach areas. Palm Springs is another place. Orange County, it issued measures specifically for local circulators, and so many of them take advantage, almost 70 to 80%. In fact, they have a requirement that they got to cover 10% of the cost of maintenance. Some of the examples, San Clemente runs three, Dana Point five, San Juan Capistrano two. As I said, Laguna Beach and Palm Springs, both, they do it year-round. Theirs is geared not so much as, as, as a tourist shuttle to, to move people at a time when you have more people there. Theirs is really, their infrastructure is limited, and so they promote shuttle use just to, so people can drive on the road, because it does get pretty jammed up. These costs, what we've looked at, we could consider a short-term, even a pilot. San Juan Capistrano has leased that. We've based this estimate off of them. Somewhere between $4,000 and $7,000. And before I go too far, I must say, we caught an error in the, the slide that you have in front of you, so I'll note where the changes are. But between $4,000 and $7,000 a month for the trolley, when you load insurance, tax, transportation, getting them here and everything, it's about $70,000 for a two-month, two-month period. And we did that similar to some of the other communities where they run them at, at high times. We would estimate the trolley, three vehicles, running from 12 to six, six hours a day, Monday through Friday. That two-month period is about $50,000. I think you have 110, and that's, when we were going back through, I think we double counted a number. Marketing costs, we base that again on, on what San Juan Capistrano did, 20,000. So a two-month trial pilot, if you wanted to run this as a temporary, about 140, 150,000 for that period of time. I will say that there's a wide variety of, of trolleys that you can get. Again, depending on who operates this, what entity within the city. We cannot use diesel because we're a public entity, but gas or CNG is something we can look at. If we used regular fuel, we may have to get an exemption from AQMD, but it is something that we can look into.
What are the choices again? CNG?
Basically, CNG and, and regular fuel.
Regular fuel, okay.
Partnership with rideshare services. This is, in effect, taking existing services that are out there, Lyft, Uber, and then paying for certain rides. We thought we would cap that. If we could get 10 riders per hour, same two-month period that we were looking at with a trolley, about $7,200. Some advantages and disadvantages. It's, it's there right now. It's in place. There's opportunities for partnerships with those people. Disadvantages is oversight of quality control. We may be skipping a whole section of mid-brand with that direct use. On this, a rideshare service, this would be that, that last model that we looked at. Only Glendale would, would do it itself. We would buy vehicles, we would create an app ourselves, and then we could run that service. Some of the benefits is, we could go out of just a loop. Disadvantages, certainly the cost. The riders may be used to using Uber or Lyft. They may just call them anyway. And then our local partners, the Americana brand had launched a trolley bus in the past, and they saw that it was a, novelty's not the right word, but they saw a jump in, in ridership, and then it slowly tailed off into, after about three months, they weren't, they had no passengers at all. I think the time, the circumstance in Glendale has changed. We certainly have more residents. The Americana brand and the development that's taken place around it is now developed and more mature, so we could look at partnering with the Downtown Glendale Association, Glendale Galleria, the Americana, maybe all of us go in and try and do some type, type of shuttle And then this is leading into our next topic, continued investment in streetcar. The sooner we could get a streetcar in place, we think that that starts to not only make the regional connections, but serve the same purpose as a shuttle or, or trolley.
Can I?
Sure. Yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like to go, before we start on the regional transit updates, go back to the idea of the temporary shuttle. And I, I have, I accompanied Jennifer McLean on the GRIT visitations to some of the offices on North Brand, and just talking with the administrators, managers, CEOs, there seemed to be a, an interest in the shuttle concept for their people, their office workers, to come down to have lunch, maybe do some shopping. So what I'd like to suggest is maybe to a pilot project during the holiday season. And I'd like for Jennifer to come up. She's here today to give council a little bit of an idea of what kind of feedback we've gotten, she's gotten, from the businesses that are in the north. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. Mayor Garpetian, members of council, is part of our Glendale Relationship Initiation Team, these GRIT visits. We did visit about 14 businesses that are just north of the 134 freeway. And some of the feedback we got, we, we heard that of the 14 companies, about 87% of them would support a shuttle. One of the challenges that we've seen, and this is echoing what Mr. Lanza Fain has said, it's very difficult for folks to get their car from outside of the parking structure that they currently are parked in, find a spot nearby downtown, have time for lunch, and then go back. So having the ease of a shuttle is something that they would very much appreciate. And some of the companies, one example is LegalZoom. This is a firm that has 290 employees, and while they are able to, they have food sometimes brought in, and then they also have amenities nearby. With the addition of, like, as, again, as Phil mentioned, Central Grill, and you now, you now have Trader Joe's, there's just an abundance of options downtown. So the shuttle would offer some, much more of an ease to them, as they mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So, and I also have heard from the public that it is difficult for those people that live north of Glen Oaks Boulevard to get to the downtown, especially on a B-line. It takes like two or three buses sometimes to get down there. So shuttle, just for the holidays, that runs from Colorado to Glen Oaks on Central and Brand, circulates, I think would be a benefit to the businesses, that the office workers in the north, the residents that live above, on, above Glen Oaks Boulevard, and also would be an economic boost, I think, to the businesses in the downtown area. What I'm asking is a second from my council colleagues, for staff to bring back a report in the next 30 days, because I'm thinking the holidays are getting closer and closer, and it, and the time goes by fast, to bring back a report to us on the most economical way to implement this pilot program for the holidays. Submit to council a report so that we can make a decision on how much it would cost, how soon it can be put into effect, how can it be done? And most importantly, as, as Mr. Lanza Fain mentioned, how can we collaborate with the Caruso affiliates and General Growth and the Chamber of Commerce and the, and the Downtown Business Association? So I'm simply asking for a second for a report to come back. I think it would benefit a lot of consumers.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Is there a second?
I just want to add something, so maybe we can.
Right, I think if you want to hold on to your motion until we all deliberate, and then, I have a speaker card as well, and at the end, we make the motion, and for, is that, is that okay?
Just to comment on that. We're discussing these concepts, these options, so I have it a second, but that would, that would assume that we have the route, which is going to go forward.
Microphone, please. As opposed to anything else that staff is recommending that we do? So wouldn't it take a full discussion, at the end of which we would move forward with that motion?
Well, I was saying, I thought if we had a, I guess if you want to, you want to choose one of the options, is that what you're saying?
If they're presenting a bunch of options, I'm assuming there's, those are up for discussion.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
At the end of which, yeah, at the end of which.
Okay.
Did we study that if you shuttle everybody to downtown Glendale, let's say to Americana or General Growth, Glendale Galleria, then what happens to the smaller stores all along? Because you're trying to bring everybody, make it easy for them. I visited some of these businesses last Thursday, I guess, or I think there, when was it, Tuesday? No, Thursday. And if we bring everybody from there to downtown Glendale, there are lots of smaller stores. They sell food and other stuff, so we are neglecting them. So how this will be coordinated.
We, I think the, the idea would be that folks, as they're moving up or down Brand Boulevard, we would have stops along the way that they could exit at mid-brand, for example, because your point's well taken. We want to make sure, the DGA especially wants to make sure that we don't neglect mid-brand in favor of GGP or Americana's property. So we would have to orchestrate it in such a way that people could get out along the way and get back on along the way.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Najarian?
So are we addressing that issue?
We are addressing, I have a speaker card, if you like. I can, I can call her up first. If not, you can, you can make your comments.
So I'll just go ahead and make some points. My problem is that, you know, we did this before. We didn't do it before. Caruso did it before. Probably the most novel way we could in an actual reconstructed streetcar. I mean, it was probably the cutest thing you could see that, that's on rubber wheels, and it just failed. If we start, if we look only towards a streetcar, I think we're going to be predetermining the outcome. There's a lot of other ways. If the goal is to, what's the best way to improve transportation from North Brand to Colorado, I'm, I'm all for that. But to say, "Let's see how a streetcar would work," I mean, there's a lot of other things. There's, there's bike share, there's increased service on the B-line. We need to see if people start taking this free shuttle, our B-line revenues are going to drop. So we're shooting ourselves in both feet, not just one foot. We're bearing the extra expense of the shuttle, and we're losing our revenue from our, our B-line system. So if, if the idea is to look at all the possibilities and, and have a discussion report on economics, the feasibility, the ridership of the best way or ways to get people from the north to the south, I'm all for them. But to say, "Let's just see, you know, how well we can make one mode work," I think we're, we're limiting ourselves. We're not being fair to ourselves in finding the best means to accomplish our goal.
Okay. If there are no other comments at this point, I'd like to call our speaker, Camille Levy.
Mayor, would that be three minutes?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Garpetian, distinguished city council, and staff. I am Camille Levy, and I am a member of the Safety Pedestrian Safety Task Force. I passed my half-million steps, and I do walk a lot of places.
You're wearing that off me.
I'm here today not only to speak on behalf of myself and my fellow seniors, but also those who don't have the flexible time to be able to address the city council at this time. In the statement, in the packet, I respectfully disagree with the statement that tech-type people, with the inference of being young, would consider a trolley passe. I live in Verdugo Viejo. I know that staff can do a much better, provide more info, because at least 8% of the population in that neighborhood is over 60. Another 5,000 are in the 50 to 59 age range. Not all of us seniors qualify for or choose the long waits for a dial-ride, nor can we bike. The B-line is a bus, not conducive to hop-on, hop-off, such as many metro areas have. And somewhere along the line, someone mentioned, and I use the Aloft as an example, that we are developing north of Glen Oaks. So I'm going to suggest that we also consider heading up to Stalker and coming back down. Not only would it benefit residents, workers, and many times older residents who can't walk more than a few blocks, as well as families with young children, all would be able to get to shopping, restaurants easily, not just the Americana. And since all new development seems to be built out to the sidewalk, it's not exactly pedestrian-friendly. A trolley would encourage those of us downsizing to move to the central core, not to have to use our cars, and to take full benefits of services that go beyond Monterey, doctors, dentists, pharmacies, hair and nail salons. And the closest grocery store to downtown is Trader Joe's. Target does not count as a grocery store. Funding, Business Improvement District concessions on parking spaces to new development could be given with a consideration to funding the trolley. I know, I remember when the Americana opened. I remember that we also did another trolley experiment in 2010. That was, how long ago? Times have changed, and think of all the other changes since then. I urge you to consider a trolley or similar option for Glendale residents, workers, and guests. As a senior, I know that 102 members of my complex would be very grateful. Let's do this the right way, the Glendale way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing. Any more comments? Well, the speaker makes a good point, I think. When the streetcar did exist on Brand Boulevard, it ran all the way up to Mountain, and the reason for that was to allow for folks living north of Glen Oaks to have access to the southern part of Glendale and beyond. So definitely makes sense to envision, you know, whatever it is that we're going to implement, to go up north of Glen Oaks, at least to Stalker, to, to give access to those folks, the folks with, you know, the elderly, the parents with small children. For them, it's difficult to, just, you know, we can say, "Oh, just walk," but, you know, our sidewalks are what they are, so. That's it, man.
Mr. Lanza Fain, can you tell me the, the pilot program that Americana had, where did it start, and how, where was the route? It went to Glen Oaks and came back from Glen Oaks? Is that what it was?
I believe they did. I believe they went through the hotels to the Hilton and the Embassy Suites, and then came back down.
Okay. So that was not very successful, is that what it was?
As I say, they, they have, they had good ridership that then started to tail off to, I think they started in the summer, and by October, the fall, they were running several empty, empty cars. Again, that was two years after they opened, and, and we didn't have any of the, the surrounding development.
And do we, I mean, when, when, when this item comes back, can you give us a report as to how long does it take with a B-line or a trolley to get from Glen Oaks on an average day, at lunch, lunch hour, from Glen Oaks all the way down to Colorado? I would like to know that. Because on one hand, we're trying to promote walking and healthier lifestyle, but on the other hand, we're trying to provide a service that takes that walking opportunity away from people. And sometimes staying in traffic, it makes people to walk more and walk more a block in order to get to where they want to go. Also, we need to think about revitalizing North Brand as well. I'm not talking about just north of Glen Oaks. I'm talking about from Glen Oaks to maybe Lexington, because our downtown is at nighttime, that 18-hour city that, that we would like to have, it ends pretty much at California, if I'm not mistaken. North of that, there is not much happening. So if we want to have a future plan as to how can we revitalize that portion from California... So if we wanna have a future plan as to how can we revitalize that portion from California all the way to Glen Oaks, that's another issue that we need to look into. Also, that will help all the employees of the, the, the tech companies or, or any, any offices that are in downtown to have another option, so they don't have to go all the way down to Colorado area or even mid-brand. So, but at this point, is, there is a motion on the, on the floor, is there a second, or you wanna?
Not a motion really, it's a request to come back.
Rest for a second.
I have a couple of follow-up questions before we move forward. So can someone explain, so what, what is a trolley versus a shuttle bus?
Basically, when we'd say trolley, we're talking about an open-air, an open-air vehicle similar to what you'd, you'd picture in your mind as a cable car in San Francisco, but with tires.
So it's a glorified bus?
It, it's something.
It's more fun.
Something fun, something fun.
Cuter, cuter.
Something fun for all.
If you think of the. It's a bus. It's a means of, means of transportation, it's just a bus.
Rubber-wheeled version of what would roll through the Americana.
But I understand that, but it's not on rail, it doesn't have the electric lines, so it's not a, technically not a trolley, it's a bus without a top. Okay. So how long would it, would it take us to get something like this, whether it's in the, the conventional bus format, shuttle format, or a trolley format, up and running? And how much do we even have an idea how much it would cost? And the reason I ask, before you answer, because I, I, I look at any of this in lieu of the streetcar, you know, let's get something there before we implement the streetcar, because frankly, this doesn't really excite me as a long-term solution. I don't think Glendale is the city that needs another set of, you know, tires on the street, another, another, another few buses. And to the extent that it's gonna take us three or four years to get this up and going, I mean, it's pretty, you know, I, I want us to move as fast as possible forward with the streetcar project, and to the extent that it's gonna take a lot of resources from us that could otherwise go towards the streetcar project. Also, this is something that doesn't really excite me that much. So can you answer the question, please?
Yes, sir. If we, if we were to act very quickly, because we would, we would probably be reaching out to Nevada, probably is the, the location, based on what we've seen, the best area in which to draw these vehicles, to lease one, to negotiate it, lease it, ship it, bring it back, outfit it, market for it, staff it, and get ready, arguably, we could be ready for the holiday shopping season in 2017 for a two-month pilot period.
So no feasibility study, nothing like that, no, no environmental report?
Just because you're basically, as you say, you're, you're driving a, a bus up and down the street, albeit it's a, if, if you think of Hollywood Boulevard and folks get on the tour buses to see where the stars live, something akin to that, but obviously in a much nicer, you know, kind of Glendale style. I would submit to you that the, to Ms. Levy's point, the broader we make the, the route that it would move through, the service area, the more, and you still wanna have those short headways, then the more vehicles you'd have to purchase or lease, and thus the cost starts to spiral out. What we have in front of you is probably about $150,000 to $200,000 with contingency for a two-month, a two-month trial period.
Okay. So that's another thing I noticed, that on our, on our version of this, we had $140,000, but on yours, it was 200?
It's 140, I'm saying that, that by way of contingency and everything else, just a nice round number would be 200. The number that we have here, I think it's $70,000 a month for a two-month period. Maybe we wanna go all the way well into January for Christmas, whatever the case might be, I think 200 is a nice round number to use.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I understood this correctly, there was a formal motion, formal motion made or a request for a second, and then there was an, an alternative that was made.
To broaden, I mean, my suggestion was to broaden the report that, that we're gonna get.
And I would support, I, I'm, I'm supporting the second one, just because I think we need to know what it is that we're doing, what's the best for the city.
We can do both.
However, we are adding few more buses. That's the point, what we are doing. We have the B-line, we have the other buses, right, metro buses, so we are adding few more buses. It's not, we are not changing anything, actually.
Well, if I may.
It's a new route, it's a new route, essentially.
But as I understand it, the B-line, if you live in above Nor, above Glen Oaks, you have to take two or three buses to get down to the Americana, which is a little bit kind of difficult for a lot of people. This is simply a temporary program, pilot project that I'm proposing for the holidays. Mr. Lansaffin said that when Caruso affiliated did this for about three months, it was very popular. We're not even asking for three months, I'm, I'm suggesting two months during the holidays to try to alleviate congestion and parking issues for people that live in Glendale, that wanna shop in Glendale, that just don't have the time to get down here. Maybe somebody, people in the hills wanna come down and shop and don't wanna drive down, and they can maybe park and walk and, and pick up the shuttle or the streetcar, whatever we wanna call it, jitney, to get to the downtown area for lunch or shopping. I just feel would be a, a benefit economically for the businesses all along, Central and Brand, I think it would be an opportunity for the office workers to bring their money down to the downtown area, and I'm only suggesting this as a temporary fix, not as a long-term at this point. I think we have to see how it works, how it goes, and I, I'm just asking for a second on a, a report from staff that we can look at and make the decision.
So your motion includes?
Well, let's, let's get some facts down first. The B-line goes to Stalker right now. So whoever said it takes two buses to get from Stalker to the Americana, it's a one-seat. So let's, let's just make sure that, am I, am I right, staff? Does we have transportation staff here? Yes, Catherine Engels says yes. So it, we already have that, so. I'm not against looking at that, but I wanna look at that in a larger scope. So if, if you wanna do two reports, do a report for that, I'm not against that, but I wanna see a broader thing that, that looks at revenue impact. We're gonna lose revenue from the B-line to the folks that are gonna take the free bus. We're, we're cannibalizing our bus system that we, year after year, put tens of millions of dollars in, not tens of millions, up to several millions of dollars in. So I don't know what those numbers are, but let's look at that. If it looks like projected ridership would be great, we can make a decision based on that. If we say that we would be better served by adding one more B-line, or condensing a B-line route and calling it whatever we wanna call it and wrapping it with, with whatever sort of holiday gear that we want, let's look at that too. So.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Let's look at the larger thing. The centerpiece can be the, I mean, the centerpiece can be the, the shuttle, but let's look at everything and talk about it.
Okay, we have a, we have a request and a second, so, a motion and a second, so.
So we'll bring back the report on the temporary holiday shuttle.
As well as the broader alternatives.
And let's not limit it to temporary, I mean, i- i- if we see that this could be self-sustaining, I'm all for it, let's, let's look at it as long as we can go, let's let it ride, but.
Okay.
But I'm, let's start with that.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. So what's next, please?
Next is a, go ahead. Oh, oh, next is a series of updates on things that you're very familiar with, BRT, the LA-Glendale-Burbank corridor study, high-speed rail, and streetcars where we wanna transition. The metro, the, I'm sorry, Measure M included BRT. There are two basic alignments that are being looked at, what I would call street and, and then one on the freeway. This is the street, runs from Pasadena through, and I believe this one is running on Broadway. It goes up Brand, there's an alternate route up Central and then out, then there's alternate routes once you get into Burbank. The freeway running, again, from Pasadena to Burbank, there's an alternate here that gets up to the airport. There are two or three stops in Glendale on, on this particular alignment. Both of these are being studied in environmental. That is in procurement now with Metro. That study will most likely begin in early 2018, completed about a year later. This would be the, the opportunity for us to investigate alternative routes to, and either say one of the other of those, or even something different. From what we have heard from the council is that you prefer the freeway alignment and make sure that it serves Space 134, or at least makes accommodations to serve Space 134, which would really be the central hub for our downtown. When we look at BRT on Glendale Streets, the idea is to have dedicated lane for the bus. Our traffic right now on, on one of the two or three routes that we would use is already constrained, so it would probably require a mixed flow of service. In other words, we wouldn't be able to dedicate a lane just for that, and so you'd be left with something comparable to the existing service. Glendale, if we were able to reduce costs by a freeway alignment, which is our preferred, we'd like to strike up the idea that any cost savings to the project, because you aren't building out many of those stops, would be put back into the BRT corridor-adjacent projects, transit projects in Glendale. So those are concepts that we will be bringing to, to Metro as the BRT moves into its environmental. This is the, the route for our current route for the high-speed rail. In, there are no stops in Glendale at this point. In the, the Burbank Airport is one, and then down to Union Station. However, the, the Director Najarian, our Councilman Najarian, did sponsor a motion with the Metro Board to study this corridor. The Measure R funds are being used to study different modes of transportation through that. The study consultant should be on board in late 2017, then maybe an 18 to 12 month, I'm sorry, eight to 12-month completion of that. That study includes, and these are things that you, you've seen before, four new stations, two would be in the city of Glendale, adding service, that is more service, more stops, look at different modes of transportation. We've talked about the, the DMUs, the diesel multiple units. It also looks at light rail as an alternative. We have asked if there is money to look at Glendale Streetcar and how would that coordinate with the transit that's running through this corridor. High-speed rail, as I said, Burbank to LA, that sectioned about 12 miles, would stop at the airport, Union Station. There have been several public meetings, the next one would be June of next year. Engagement with Glendale residents, and that will continue through, they are here, one of the partners, kind of the transit partners that we're talking about as we go through all of these. Final environmental documentation is expected spring of next year. In terms of high-speed rail, some of the safety investments that are made here, MetroLink would go to positive train controls, that is an automatic shut-off if something should happen to the, to the driver. And then grade separation projects, where it actually would no longer have crossings over the track in these locations. We have mapped them out for you here as well. This is a rendering of the current Sperry-Salem overpass. This is looking northbound on San Fernando Road towards the freeway and Doran Street. It would, see that. You'd make this movement and come over to the other side of the freeway. This will have a design for pedestrians as well as bike. The Fairmont Connector, we have shown here, this is the, the P-hook design, but gives you an idea if you're coming from the city of Los Angeles on the other side of the tracks, travel northbound, you take the P-hook and then on the flyover, you would get to your destination. So our grade separation, this is a plan of what that might look like. Most of these separations take advantage of lowering of the road, this is a, a sectional flower street, lower the road and go a bit above. So there would be some area where you're ramping up, going over the street, and then you ramp back down. The street would be lowered, so it wouldn't be so high in the air. Riverwalk Bridge is another improvement that is being looked at. The bridge you see right here crosses the Verdugo Wash, and then this is a concept that we just started talking about, would be a pedestrian bridge across San Fernando Road to gain access to these trails. The, the final thing we wanna look at is the Glendale-Burbank Regional Streetcar, we are calling it Glendale-Burbank. Burbank has indicated an interest, just as we have, to continue from the Glendale border to the airport, which we think makes a great amount of sense in our efforts to connect region. This is the route, again, you've seen it. What we, what we did add to it here is, we've started to look at segments, three miles from the Zarian Transportation Center to Brand, almost three miles to the border, and then almost four miles to the airport. We have, you haven't seen this in the past, but along the lines of the conversation we just had, we'd like the consultant to look at a spur that goes up to Mountain and picks up that north, North Brand area and then comes back down. So that'll be a.
That's where, where the old station was, right? It ended.
Correct. Correct. Some of the funding sources, I think, Mr. Mayor, you, you were influential in the SCAG grant that we got. The entire council agreed to add funds to that in our current budget, and so we believe that we have enough funding in place for a viability study for a streetcar along that route that we planned. It would include these things, infrastructure needs, traffic and parking impact analysis, some funding sources, different technology options. We no longer, we, we may no longer be tied to that overhead energy source, there's different things out there we can look at. As I said, in the RFP, we'll have some add alternatives, personal rapid transit, if there is funding available to do that, we would like to take a look at that as an option or as an enhancement too. And then the Burbank alignment and airport access, that way Burbank will know what that is and, and is willing or can make the decision whether to, to come along. Tonight, we're asking you for direction to issue a request for proposals to perform this study, this feasibility study. If you agree, we can have that out on the street tomorrow or the next day. Fairly quick turnaround, as Mr. Sinanian said, I'd like to get that in as soon as you can, and your staff agrees. Next step for the studies would be to advertise that. We would get a panel of interviewers to, to talk to those that propose, make recommendations. We'll return to the council sometime late summer this year, and we believe we can have the study, the viability, feasibility study, completed by next year. Some of the steps following that, environmental clearance, project design, utility relocation, construction, those things would all fall into place and, and we think that's a multi-year effort, but again, we, we think it's in at least my lifetime, my career lifetime, let's say. Estimated costs, somewhere 10 to 25 million dollars per mile, I know that's a big range, but a lot of it would depend on the technology we use, what kind of obstacles we encounter. The total is about just under 10 miles, so 97 to 240 million dollars.
Is that the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is that the entire length including Burbank or just Glendale's portion of it?
Yes, just to Glendale.
Yes, all the way to the airport.
All the way to the airport.
Okay. So it's 10 to 25 million per mile now, because we, we had a number about 50 to 60 million.
Yeah, this, this was a number that, that we pulled out, but our feasibility study will give us a better idea of that.
Okay, good, this is better.
I think that number's kinda low, Phil, but as you said, when you get into it, I mean, assuming we have all the right-of-way, which probably we do.
We, we had heard estimates of 40 to even 60 million dollars. We're not sure how much of that was in right-of-way, and we're not sure how much of our own right-of-way We're not sure how much of that was in right-of-way, and we're not sure how much of our own right-of-way we'll be able to reuse. But we do still own that right-of-way, certainly up Brand out Glen Oaks.
And the route here was on Brand or on Central?
The route for the streetcar was on Brand.
On Brand.
Oops.
That's on Brand.
There's an alternative could be Central, something we would look at.
I thought it sort of starts on one street, ends on another street. So it comes down Brand, or Central veers off into Brand, is it not?
We've looked at different alignments, as you recall. That'll go up Central to bypass Brand Boulevard of Cars, turn back onto Brand, and either loop and come back down, southbound on Central from Glen Oaks. But as the alignment that we show, if we were to spur off into Burbank or go up to Brand, I mean, those are all things that'll come out of the feasibility study.
More questions, if you don't mind?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I know this is too much, but there are way to include the city of LA in this. The original streetcar did go all the way to LA, didn't it?
Down Glendale Boulevard.
Right, down Glendale Boulevard, right. Is there an interest by LA? Do we know? Have we broached the subject?
We certainly can do that. We have not yet, but I will tell you that we are working very closely with them on the previous matter, the Verdugo Corridor. They are very much involved, so this is right in alignment with that.
It may complicate things and cause a delay, which I don't think any one of us wants, but it would really make this a fun, more regional project. So second question I have is, as we were discussing the, where is it? The region transit update, and one thing that struck me that was missing was Eco Rapid Transit, orange line. Is it the staff's position that they don't see that? They don't view it as a regional transit project that deserves an update?
No, I think the idea would be that Eco Rapid, if you go back, Phil? Eco Rapid, if there's a role to be played, it would be in that alignment. The folks at Metro, the study that's being done looks at a true light rail project, and Eco Rapid is true light rail. So one of the alternates that the Metro team is looking at is, as Phil points out, the use of the existing MetroLink service and changing that, and then also looking at light rail. And then the discussion for the folks at Metro and for, I imagine, city of Glendale, Burbank, and LA City are who, if we are to go to light rail, who would be that light rail operator? But I think that one's a little far further down the line for us to make that determination as yet. I will tell you that we have, and today we have Mike Kodama, the Executive Director, here in the audience, as he was, or at least his representatives were, even on the panel, going back to the January transit session that the council had.
Right. And is our guest going to have an opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor? What's the format?
If they like to.
To that end, I will submit to you that we have partners and representatives from these various agencies, Metro and Eco Rapid, as well as High-Speed Rail, and of course, your local, your local team here in the city of Glendale.
If any of you wishes to speak, please fill out a card, and so we can open the...
Mr. Mayor, I would like specifically to ask Mr. Kodama to speak as to the light rail versus MetroLink, using MetroLink's rail to conduct light rail situation for Eco Rapid Transit.
Okay.
After you speak, you can fill out the card. Your name for the record, please.
My name is Michael Kodama. I'm the Executive Director of Eco Rapid Transit. I'm also a Glendale resident.
That makes it better. Much better.
Thank you for having me here, and great work that you and your staff's doing. We work closely with Mr. Ochoa and with your folks in transportation, like Fred and others, and we have throughout the time that you've been a member of Eco Rapid Transit. Our position as a joint powers authority with 12 cities and the airport is that we're supporting transit options, and we're pushing them forward from a local level. So your work as members of a variety of transportation agencies are very important. I know our board's going to be there on Thursday, and we'll see Councilmember Najarian again over there, just on the regional issues. Mr. Ochoa is right, we don't know what the alignment is and the different options, but we're happy to help you explore those, and this allows you to have connectivity with the other cities through being a member of our organization. He's also correct in terms of what type of transportation mode are you going to choose, and how you choose it is really, really important. So you're at a very important time in, I think, the city. One thing that I will say that I think is real important is your consideration of all of these different options, integration of the systems will be critical. How you connect to downtown Glendale is extremely important, and I think the options before you and the way your city's handling and your staff bringing it back to you next month is really, really important for everyone. So I applaud you on moving forward and being very, very serious about these issues at this time. Be happy to answer any questions you have about our organization, but we want to, we're based on supporting our local members and pushing on behalf of you as well. And with Mr. Sinayan as our new chair over the next two years, I know that Glendale's going to be pushing hard, working with all of his colleagues on our Board of Directors as well.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Sinayan.
So technology allows us to use the heavier rail that MetroLink uses to actually run light rail cars on it, right? I mean, light rail.
There's a lot of changes taking place in technology now. The balance part of it is integrating with current systems that are available, such as what MetroLink has, certain type of trains, Metro's using certain type of trains. It also depends on if a system is going to be built by itself, or if it's designed to have connectivity with other types of trains and lines. So it could get very, very complicated. The new high-speed rail trains are incredible. There's new options for streetcar that are wireless. We had an opportunity to be guests, Mr. Sinayan and I and some of our board members were guests and got to see what they're doing in Guangzhou, where they have streetcars with wireless technology. You actually power up the station and go, so it's incredible to be able to see that.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is John Kosiamba.
Just a couple of comments. My name is John Kosiamba. I live in Glendale, Glendale resident, heavily involved in transportation stuff. One thing I didn't hear about is, you know, you're talking about these little mini buses and stuff. Right now, you might consider partnering up with one of the high-tech firms in California, where they're doing driverless buses, mini buses. And these can take, therefore, any route, and maybe they would like to use Glendale as a testbed. So you might consider that. I mean, I think they hold maybe 10 or 20 people or something like that. But you can just route them wherever you want to, I guess. I don't know what they do, but check that one out. The high-speed rail, they talked about at a meeting that they're going to make, of course, grade separations. They talked about putting it 20 feet up in the air, and then they could just drive underneath with the cars and stuff, do their grade separations that way. That just seems absolutely insane to everybody in the Pellicone District, and it's also going to take your rolling stock sound, and it's going to carry it across Glen Oaks into the northwest area. If they want to do grade separations, they should do it like they're going to in Burbank, and dive, go below ground level. And then you can just put your, it's grade separation above the track. So I think that makes more sense, and we talked about that. The other thing that they could do with the high-speed rail is, since it's not going to have anything to do with the Glendale Railroad Corridor, just have them dive back underground in Burbank, go under Griffith Park and save half, save seven miles on the distance and go right into Union Station. Because they're going to come in underground into Burbank, tunneling, why not just tunnel on into Union Station, save all that time and the mess we have to do. And I guess the third big thing is, when they do all this stuff with this high-speed rail, where are they going to put the rolling stock while they're digging these holes or building these giant walls to write on? Are the trains going to run down the middle of San Fernando Road? I mean, I think that's a big question. I've never heard anybody on the high-speed rail system answer yet, or even talk about. So that's a big one to think about. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Chair, we're very fortunate to have Michelle Beam from High-Speed Rail in the audience. I know she's like, oh, you're calling on me. But can you give us a, can you give us a three-minute or so summary, or perhaps longer, with the discretion of the mayor, as to where we are on high-speed rail? You got some good news this week. There's some new rulings on sharing the tracks and the right-of-way. And let us know if this is going to be a reality that we should expect through Glendale.
Sure. With the high-speed rail project, we really, our project has two characteristics. North of the Burbank Airport, we are pure dedicated high-speed rail with speeds of over, up to 220 miles per hour. So basically, the trains are traveling at the same speed as a Formula One race car. Once we get to Burbank and traveling all the way down to Anaheim, we have been discussing a shared corridor, so that we could introduce high-speed service into that corridor. And as we introduce high-speed service into that corridor, we're able to address a lot of the issues that we're facing today in the corridor. By bringing high-speed rail into operation there, we can address the state of good repair. So basically, we have the opportunity to upgrade the existing tracks. We can address the, some of the concerns with regards to safety and noise. So we can put up sound walls around the outside of the corridor. Obviously, we've got the PTC system that we invested in, that's already operational for MetroLink. We can put in an earthquake early warning system as well, that's required. And then we would seal the corridor, and obviously, we need to give the grade separations a lot of thought in terms of how we design those. But essentially, that means that it's a quiet corridor, and none of the trains in that corridor will need to blow their horns as they come up. And I know Glendale's invested in creating that quiet corridor. This will allow more trains to operate in that corridor, more service. We have the option to take a look at who or what type of trains operate that service. But as we do those improvements, it is also the time to take a look at whether or not there is a need or an interest in additional stations along that corridor, and what service should serve those stations. So for instance, if there is that interest in more frequency additional stops within Glendale, when you're doing this reconstruction of the corridor, that would be the time to know what it is we wanted, so that we only had to build within that corridor once, and that would reduce basically the burden, the cost, on everybody. So that's one of the things that we're definitely very, very interested in. Also, very interesting, the federal government did make a rulemaking, did some rulemaking, yay, in the last week or so, and basically said that high-speed rail trains can operate in the same corridor with our conventional trains, so with our MetroLink trains, with our Surfliner trains, and in fact, encouraged high-speed use of our existing rail corridors. So that has gone through the rulemaking, so that means that it's something that we can actively plan for. So we're very excited about that. And we're also very excited, obviously, about the fact that we did have the cap-and-trade vote, which extended cap-and-trade out to 2030. Cap-and-trade is one of the key ways that high-speed rail is funded right now, and is really that component, that partner component to SB1. SB1, which was talked about earlier, was about everything but high-speed rail, right? It's about how we, overall, in the state of California, modernize and upgrade, address our state of good repair for our transportation system across all modes. And then the cap-and-trade, which was extended, has a component assigned specifically to high-speed rail, also components assigned to those TIRCP programs that you saw mentioned. So that's where our cap-and-trade dollars are going. So both of those programs work together, complementary, to make sure people can go from walking to biking to driving to training, right, in all of those modes. So that's what we're looking at right now. We continue to plan. It is a large and difficult program, as you know. We will be having meetings, public meetings before next year, but we are continuing to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a question. We have a question for you, Mr. Najarian.
Yes, you mentioned the speed limit, or the speed will be 220 miles from Burbank toward north.
Correct.
And from Burbank to Anaheim, the speed will be how much?
We would be designing the corridor to about 100 to 110 mile-per-hour capacity. If you think about it, and the reason you do that is because of the improved safety. Our freeways are designed to a 70 mile-per-hour speed limit, because that means that we have better sight distance, smoother curves, although it's Southern California, when people get the opportunity, they drive 90. But philosophically, the speed limit is 55, right? So we're looking at 110 miles per hour, because it has certain, certain components of that 110-mile designation that work with all modes. We would then be operating at the appropriate and safe speed. Right now, you've got your MetroLink trains operating through here at about 79 miles per hour. So we believe that we could increase the speed that the trains are coming through here, MetroLink included. Everybody could operate a little bit faster in that sealed corridor world with the new locomotives that MetroLink is getting, then we would all be able to operate like right around 100 miles per hour.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here, really appreciate it. Anything else? More comments?
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. On the page, it says Glendale-Burbank Streetcar, and then it says estimated cost, $97 million to $242 million, right? But then you said this is from Glendale to Burbank Airport, so our portion will be less than what has been mentioned here.
It should be. Because it's about 2/3s in Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a large contingency from Metro, and although there's not a specific question out there at this point, we have Jeanette Owens out of the Regional Rail. If you'd like to maybe do a three-minute or so overview, like Michelle did, or maybe agree or disagree with what Mr. Ochoa said, it's better if you agree. It's an easier meeting if you agree with him.
So, hi, my name is Jeanette Owens, Senior Executive Officer representing Metro Regional Rail. Thank you for being here, for having me here today. We love Scott, and so we work very closely with Scott. We agree with almost 99.9% of what he said. We're still working on the BRT, though, but that's to be discussed. We have our BRT Metro team here as well, and we have Karen Swift, our Community Relations Area Manager here, as well as Danielle Valentino. She is our Community Manager, Relations Manager for Regional Rail, and Brian Baldaroma, who's our Project Manager for most of your projects here in the city of Glendale. So there were a couple of items that you mentioned, which is the Union Station to Burbank Corridor Study. So we are completed, the scope of work for that is now in procurement, so we're hoping to, hopefully, we'll be able to select a consultant fairly soon so that we can study that. We, I know Eco Rapid has expressed an interest in regards to the Union Station to Burbank Airport Study, so we're going to work closely with all the stakeholders, including high-speed rail, because I think Michelle was alluding to the fact that if you include an additional transit mode along the MetroLink right-of-way, for example, if we're looking at light rail, light rail will not necessarily be able to operate on a commuter rail track, an existing commuter rail track. We only have 100-foot of right-of-way, so this study will look at both with or without high-speed rail in order to include light rail. So that's what, we're going to obviously involve Michelle in regards to that study to make sure that we continue to look at what the overall investment will be at the corridor, so we're not making wise choices of public funds. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. I didn't want to really elaborate or go into detail anything specific, mainly because Scott and Philip did a great job in surmising the entire Metro studies that we are embarking on in the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask for three minutes and 48 seconds. There is a, we're talking about this corridor, of course, Glendale's in the middle of the There is a, we're talking about this corridor, of course, Glendale's in the middle of the LA, Glendale-Burbank corridor. At the south end is LA Union Station, and I think we have a three-minute and 48-second concept of what Union Station is gonna be in, in the near future. Can you run that? Param?
Since 1939, Los Angeles Union Station has connected communities across the Los Angeles region, today, a population of over 20 million people. Union Station is central to the transportation renaissance taking place in LA today. The north and south courtyards of the historic building are seen before the existing baggage-handling building, with Metro's Gateway Headquarters in the distance. The Above Grade Concourse stands above the landscaped West Plaza with ADA-accessible Ticketing and entrance to the renovated red and purple lines is at left. At right, the Amtrak Club Lounge entrance fronts a landscaped Plaza space. Ascending to the mezzanine level, Gold Line access is at left. Enter the Above Grade Concourse, opening to panoramic views on both sides. With platform access at left, retail space and amenities and train information signage Moving past the Metro Gateway Building, the train yard and passenger platforms are seen Continuing along the Above Grade Concourse, retail and waiting areas loop back toward Descending the mezzanine stair, Petzorius Plaza appears below, with the Metro Gateway Building ahead. Descending onto Petzorius Plaza, the red and purple Metro subway lines can be accessed to the left. Local, regional, and shuttle services buses are located at right. Passing the entrance to Metro Gateway Headquarters and moving along the busway, the new Above Grade Concourse is seen beyond. The Link-Union Station project is designed to meet the long-term needs of Union Station while transforming it into a world-class transit and mobility hub.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, for bringing this video to us, so we see what's going on with Union Station in the near future. When is this planned to break ground?
Well, we're still finalizing the design, but included in there is the West Santa Ana Branch, AKA Eco Rapid footprint in there, along with high-speed rail, MetroLink, Amtrak, as well as any other connectors, as we're talking about the LA-Glendale-Burbank corridor. So, they have all that in mind. Thank you, Jeanette, for that.
Thank you. Mr. Sinayan, I think you have, we have another guest that you'd like to introduce.
Yes, we do. We have a delegation also from the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and we have our new Public Governmental Affairs Director, Sarah Shihi, here. Maybe she'd like to say a few words as to where she sees, I mean, the airport was mentioned numerous times throughout the presentation, and perhaps we should give the airport also an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you for inviting me up to speak. I'm Sarah Shihi, Senior Director of Government and Public Affairs for the Hollywood Burbank Airport. I really have nothing to add. We are really excited to be the first airport that's plane-to-train connected in California, and we're excited about all of the possibilities that are happening with high-speed rails, stopping at the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and just all of the activity from the airport down to Union Station. I think that's gonna be a real plus for us in attracting passengers, so.
And all of this happening contemporaneously with the new terminal?
Exactly, exactly, which we're still in the FAA planning stages, but yes.
And your new Antelope Valley Line train station is how far away from?
It's scheduled to open to the public, I think, June of 2018. Is that correct, Metro? Yes.
So, that means people from Glendale can take two lines to get to the Bob Hope Burbank Airport, either the Ventura County line or the Antelope Valley line. So, there will be quite frequent service to and from. And of course, you've heard, there's a lot of connectivity that we're, that we're looking to bring to the entire region, so.
Very exciting.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for being here. Anything else? No questions?
Just need the motion to release the RP.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Motion to note and file the other items, they're all part of the report, so. And move to note and file the other items as well.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Aljani?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Yes.
Mayor Caravetti?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Do we have closed session items?
Adjournment. Adjourn, move to adjourn for the special meeting.
Second.
You're adjourned.